Chairman Martin.
Yes, it does.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Lucchese. Mr. Plavac.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Shoemaker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
The first thing on the agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from the meeting held on March fourteenth. These minutes were circulated for everyone's approval. Uh, can we have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make the motion.
There are second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Shoemaker. Ms. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Plavac.
Yes.
Mr. Lucchese.
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Alright, the next matter on the agenda this evening is the continued hearing for the proposed text amendment request to the zoning code. Those of you who have been here before will remember that we have not yet completed the public testimony portion of this hearing. That's where we're going to begin tonight and ask the village, who's the applicant, uh, if they have anything additional they want to address us with. Sorry, I forgot. Everybody who's going to address the board tonight needs to stand up and get sworn in.
To those who will testify at the public hearing, you are reminded that the River Forest Village Code makes it unlawful for any person to knowingly make a false statement of material fact to the village in connection with any application, report, affidavit, oath, certification, or attestation. Violations are punishable as a petty offense with a fine. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will give true testimony relative to the matters before this zoning board of appeals?
Alright, thank you. Now we will ask the village, uh, to make any additional presentations that they have.
Alright, good evening, zoning board of appeals. Thank you for, uh, your service on the committee and thank you to everyone for attending tonight to learn more about the uh, text amendment proposal that's before the zoning board and also to share public testimony. As Chairman Martin mentioned, uh, I have provided, uh, an overview of this proposal, uh, twice now, so I don't want to repeat everything before the zoning board of appeals with the hope that we could get through public testimony and into some deliberation. So I will just kind of quickly go through some of the highlights and also some of the new information that was provided in the packet for this, uh, this meeting tonight.
Excuse me. Could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. Good point. Good point. Thank you. Uh, my name is Matt Walsh. I'm the village administrator. I've been, uh, the village administrator for about a year now. I'm appointed by the village board. Um, so my role here tonight is to speak on behalf of the village board as a petitioner for this text amendment that will be before the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals will make a recommendation and that will go forward to the village board for future consideration. Thank you. So, starting off, the rationale, uh, the reason that this has all come about is to encourage and attract appropriate viable economic development. This has been a recurring theme through comprehensive plan, through policies initiated by the village board. And in the comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty nineteen, one of the recommendations was that the village board and zoning board consider amendments to the commercial district regulations. We're, we're not here to develop or encourage economic development just for the sake of economic development. The reason that the village wants to see or needs to see economic development is to provide much needed revenues to support the services that the village provides, whether it's public safety and infrastructure investment, as well as the other taxing bodies like our park district, our library, and also our school districts. And one of the other driving factors for this consideration tonight is the, the challenging development environment that is out there and the rising cost of construction. In terms of the economic benefit, the reason that it's not just for the sake of economic development, I'm not here just to, because I want to see trains go up or anything happen. There's a reason for this. And the most recently completed development, the Sheridan, contributes to all the taxing bodies over eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars per year. A bulk of that, about seventy percent of that goes to our school districts. So that is why we are here and that is why we are seeking a text amendment to update our commercial zoning regulations. And how we got to drafting this text amendment started about a year and a half ago, maybe longer than that, with our Economic Development Commission. The Economic Development Commission, or EDC, is a appointed advisory board from the village board that recommends or considers ways to retain and attract businesses to River Forest. So tonight we have, uh, chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Kyler Brown, that is here and has a few words to say to kind of explain what the discussions were a- at the Economic Development Commission. Yeah, just so the, the folks on Zoom can hear.
Alright. My name is Kyler Brown. Excuse me if I'm a little nervous. There's usually not this many people at, at our meetings. Uh, I'm the chair of the Economic Development Committee for the River Forest and I'm here to speak as chair and representative of the, of the EDC. And I will, but first, I just want to say that personally, as a resident, can understand why people might have some concerns if they're just hearing that the village is looking to increase height allowances and such for possible development. Truly love that so many people showed up tonight to voice those concerns. It's fantastic and I believe, uh, truly what a thriving community needs. So thank you very much. I love this village. I lived here practically my whole life, raised here, raising my kids here. I personally have no desire to see any significant change to the character of this wonderful village of ours. And I honestly don't see that as the purpose of these zoning changes. Part of the Economic Development Committee's task, as the name would imply, is to help with the economic development of the village. To this end, the committee is in support of the proposed zoning changes. The two main reasons are, are this. First, it is our understanding that most of the changes requested, specifically items like heightened floor restrictions in the commercial corridors would be approved by the zoning board via variances on a one-off basis. Most likely to local developers that might be aware of the village's appetite for development. Past thirty years, all such variances have been approved for, uh, development. Frankly, the current zoning regulations do not match what is being allowed. It is the opinion of the committee therefore that is prudent to implement these changes so that they reflect what the uh, zoning committee would be approved, you know, and therefore the village. So now, why is it important to make holistic changes instead of making changes on a one-off basis? It's, it's a good question. Well, by making these changes official, it's more transparent and the village can accurately provide zoning restrictions to possible developers. Who will then know exactly what is allowable and not have to spend, to depend on possible variances being approved. The solid developers aren't spending their money on proposals based on verbal commitments that may be made. This in turn will allow the village to pick from a wider array of professional developers, consequently have a larger variety of possible developments. More variety should allow the village to choose the developments that most closely fit the style and character that the residents of River Forest desire. In short, more options and transparence, transparency are good things and that's what this should provide. Secondly, the committee truly believes that these changes will help create a stronger retail presence with a larger variety of options along our commercial corridors. The additional retail strength should, amongst other things, help alleviate the tax burden on our residents, which is yet another task of the Economic Development Committee. It is for these reasons above and several others that the committee, based on their mission, based on their mission, is in support of the proposed changes. Thank you very much for your time. I will take questions now and if someone wants to stop me afterwards, I'm happy to discuss. Thanks.
Thank you, Kyler. Um, before getting into the proposed text amendment, I wanted to once again touch on the development approval process. There are no changes proposed to the review and approval process for any new construction or development. And what I mean by that is that the text amendments here do make revisions to, um, maximum height, density. But none of these proposals or anything that would come forward is allowed by right. And what I mean by by right is that a developer comes to village hall or logs onto the online portal and wants to build something. If they meet the requirements, they get approved. They're due a permit. What our zoning code contains already and is not being touched is a process that allows for the scrutiny and transparency for any of those proposed developments. Plan development process is what that's referred to, P or PD, as you may have seen in some of the documentation. That applies to all developments twenty thousand square feet or more, or includes multifamily housing. The planned development process requires at least three meetings with, uh, public notices sent out to neighbors. There's several other public meetings that are incorporated into that and applicants are required to submit extensive documentation to project the impacts of said development, their traffic study, school impact study, utility impact study. And those are all scrutinized by the development review board, which is another appointed board by the village board and makes recommendations to the village board. And then the village board has a final review and can always deny proposed developments. And I think this is important to keep repeating because I know that there's a concern for many in this room that these changes will lead to opening the floodgates and seeing developments a domino effect of developments happening quickly across our commercial corridors. That is not the case. Uh, every proposal will be viewed on a case-by-case basis and approved or denied by the village board. So the text amendment, uh, by text amendment, that's a, a change to the, the zoning code that's requested by, by the village board. There are several pieces to this text amendment, uh, because we wanted to, uh, touch or update the revision, the restrictions as it applies to every commercial district. There are four commercial districts that are being affected by this. C one, which is along North Avenue, C two, which is primarily along Madison Street. C three, which is effectively the area from Lathrip to Park Avenue, from Lake Street, south to central with a few other lots. And then also the ORIC district, which stands for office, research, industrial and commercial. That is the River Forest Town Center. So from Lathrip east to Harlem, south of Lake Street and north of the tracks. The first piece of this text amendment is consolidating the restrictions for those four chapters into one chapter. This is purely a formatting update that we think will make it easier for anyone that is viewing our village code. All of these chapters will be consolidated into one chapter with a table that lists the different restrictions for each district. Second is the allowed residential uses. This is a, um, change that will allow for, um, multifamily dwellings or multifamily above office and retail uses. A mixed use or vertical mixed use building is typically what is referred to. Those would be allowed by plan development. That's what the PD stands for, that, that comprehensive, uh, review process that I described. Allowing that in the C one and ORIC districts. There are already examples in both of those districts of those that have been, uh, there for several decades. The next, uh, uh, change is the increases to maximum building height. The proposal before the zoning board of appeals is raising the maximum building height from thirty feet to fifty feet along the, in the C two district on Madison Street and a few other locations throughout the village and then raising the maximum building height from fifty to sixty-five feet in the three other commercial districts. Included in the, the packet for this, this meeting is a, a shadow study performed by, uh, John Halsil with Halsil Levine. John is our, the village's planning consultant and his, his firm prepared, uh, a shadow study to show the potential impact of the building heights. I will say, and I just wanted to point out that, uh, in an attempt to be thorough and show the, um, hypotheticals, there are several examples in the, uh, in the packet that show, uh, examples of where there's already existing buildings. The reason for that is there's not a lot of empty space in River Forest. So we couldn't pick a, a blank slate to, to go ahead with the exception of the Madison Street, the village-owned Madison Street parcel. So the reason for showing it on existing sites was not to show that's what the village is going to do or any other developers coming in to buy that property. It's just to show the potential impact of these zoning restrictions that could be applied to a future uh, development on those sites. With that, I will ask John Halsil to come forward and kind of explain his methodology and just kind of go through some of the, um, examples. We're not planning to go through all the examples. There's quite a, quite a lot of scenarios in there, but we wanted to at least capture some of the ones that we felt best captured the changes.
Take the next queued up slides.
Yep.
Alright, so, uh, again, uh, for the record, my name is John Halsil. Uh, Village Forest's resident for, uh, about twenty-five years. I've been the village's planning consultant for probably about twenty-eight years. Over that time have been, uh, assisted the village in reviewing, uh, all proposed developments, all proposed planned developments, uh, PUD process, uh, other planning studies, uh, other land use matters and zoning, text amendment and, uh, related matters. So I've been doing this, uh, for the village, um, for over twenty years. Um, one of the things that was asked for, uh, uh, the village asked us and there was some response from some residents at a couple of meetings back and from ZBA members. They wanted to see a shadow study and we had offered to do that, uh, and then a couple of weeks ago, the village asked that we perform that. So I want to go through this, uh, to what Administrator Walsh said. We're not going to go through all of these. There's probably a hundred and twenty of them total. Um, we picked, uh, for, uh, reasoning, we took four different days of the year. We took, uh, the summer solstice, the winter solstice, uh, and then we took, uh, the fall equinox or the autumn equinox and the spring equinox. Cause that represented the longest days, the shortest stays and the midpoints in the year when the sun was at its highest casting the least shadow. And when the sun was at its lowest, casting the longest shadow. So we wanted to show the full spectrum of shadows. Uh, what we did is we went through, uh, and looked at a couple of key sites. One of the things that the Economic Development Commission did to sort of, uh, evaluate these things, so it wasn't theoretical, is they zeroed in on several properties on Madison Street, several properties on North Avenue. They wanted to see what this actually might look like on actual properties, so it wasn't all theoretical. So we looked at a couple of different, uh, properties on Madison Street. We looked at two different properties on North Avenue. We looked at the corner of Lake and Park. So we picked properties in all of the different districts or many of the different districts. And we showed, uh, shadows, uh, at thirty-foot building envelopes. So not buildings, but the building envelope. Um, and a fifty-foot proposed building envelope. We did that for every site three times during the day at nine o'clock in the morning, at noon and at four o'clock in the afternoon. And we did it for three times a day for four days a year for multiple sites. So there's about a hundred and twenty, I think, total, um, different shadow studies and you can see these on here. Um, so this is Madison Street in Franklin. This right now is, for lack of better word, sort of that strip center, uh, that's on the west side of Franklin. Again, not, we're proposing development on top of that. We're using that site. It was one of the sites the EDC said, let's take a look at what would go on this site. Um, so you can see the shadow, uh, and this one is spring at nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, this is, uh, at four PM. You can see the shadow completely shifts now with the shadow because the sun is in the western sky. The shadow is going further to the east, but it extends less into the adjacent residential property to the north. This is all to scale. This is done using SketchUp, which is a three D modeling program. Our GIS, which allows us to sort of geolocate these to make sure the accuracy of the sun for the pinpoint location of the property at different times of the year, differing, different times of the, um, of the day. So this isn't, this is actual shadow analysis. The one thing you also want to note, the blue is the, the, uh, again, the building envelope. So in that area, a building could go. You can also see the single-family homes and the other commercial buildings or residential buildings around it. Um, the residential is approximate. The, the dormers might not be exactly perfect. The front entrances or detached garages might not be exactly perfect. But the buildings are close in terms of setbacks, location, roof tile in terms of peak or dormered. Uh, and it also shows the distance between structures. Uh, so when you get a longer shadow off of a building from Madison Street, you all get so longer shadows off of the buildings adjacent to their neighbors. So you can see all the different shadows.
Can I ask that speakers step aside for just a moment when you're showing slides because people sitting over here can't see past you.
I, I don't know where to stand and just, I mean. Okay, alright, sure. Just. Alright. That sounds good. Okay. You bet. Um, so again, so here's Madison and Franklin, uh, fall at, at nine, and again, so fall at nine o'clock in the morning. You can see again, the sun's going to be over in the, the east, so the shadows are cast to the west. You can see how far, uh, um, they begin to go then, uh, over north of the, of the alley. Again, four PM. You can see, uh, this is fall, so they start to cast a little bit further. This is the, the development example that we showed. Again, this is not a proposed development, but one of the things was asked is can you do sort of a, a, a development that would begin to help visualize a likely development. So this is development. So if you look at what sort of the strip center is on this site, the strip center sits at the back on the alley. The parking is in the front to create a more pedestrian atmosphere along Madison Street, consistent with other Madison Street, uh, buildings. The building is on Madison Street and the parking is now in the rear. So this is a fifty-foot tall building that we show. It's commercial on the ground floor. It's got three floors of residential above, resulting in a four-story building, fifty feet tall. And this is the shadow perspective at four o'clock, uh, in the fall. Um, and that shows that. So that's a fifty-foot tall building and how the shadow would. So here it doesn't even, at this time of day, what this one is showing, and there are multiple examples. We're just showing a couple here, uh, that it doesn't hit. It goes about halfway through the parking lot. This is Madison and Ashland. Uh, what you see here, oh, Madison's is going to work. Okay, yeah. So this is Pete's Automotive. You see this building here? That's Pete's Automotive. Uh, this is the Lutheran Family Services, the adjacent building that's now village-owned property. And then there's a single-family, uh, property here owned by the village where the house has been removed and here as well. You can see the alley right here. So this is at nine o'clock in the morning in the spring, the difference between a thirty-foot tall existing envelope and a fifty-foot tall proposed envelope. Uh, and it then, it doesn't even in the spring, it doesn't extend back to the home. It only extends partially, just a little bit into the residential property owned by the village that's vacant. So it doesn't extend back and hit any existing structure. This is four PM, uh, spring. You can see again, it's going the other way, but again, in both these cases, uh, um, that, that fifty-foot tall building, uh, doesn't extend back into, uh, the actual single-family homes that are remaining. Fall, nine o'clock, thirty feet and fifty feet, uh, again, uh, in the fall, uh, it doesn't even get into the single-family lots. It gets about halfway or all the way through the village-owned cleared property. And we did this for a bunch. So this is Madison, Ashland, a fall at four PM. There's a huge document that has all of these in here. There's a bunch. This is the, uh, the development that we showed here, just to show what could go to orient you. Uh, again, Pete's Automotive. Here's the alley that goes through. Uh, this is Ashland. This is Lathrip up here. Uh, this lot is vacant. That's the village-owned residential or, uh, R two zone property. And where this parking is, that's on village-owned property. So these homes that are here are the existing, uh, single-family homes that are remaining and their detached garages and the alley that comes down here. Um, this shows how parking could fit on that residential, the village-owned property north of the alley uh, and leave a ten-foot landscape upper for Birmingham landscaping fence, whatever between the parking. So no building on the property north of the alley, uh, a small, a row of parking on the south side of the alley. Uh, this gray portion of the first floor would be interior enclosed structured parking for the residents. The frontage of this building is about a fifty or sixty-foot deep commercial space along Madison Street. This has four, uh, three floors of residential above. This is a fifty-foot building. And then what we've done here in the back here is sort of a courtyard, common, uh, approach for developers is to go up, uh, two stories, then push back about twenty feet or so. You create sort of a plaza or a park or, uh, an amenity up here for residents. It also gets more light and air into these areas. So this would accommodate residential on three floors of a brown floor commercial with interior ad grade enclosed structured parking with parking north and south of the alley. Um, and this is at fall at four PM and you can see the shadow, uh, uh, doesn't even really get into the residential property. It gets into, um, the village-owned property north of the alley.
John, wouldn't the noon time be the worst?
This.
Is the direction to the houses?
N- no, noon is the least because it's more direct up in the sky. So when the sun is, pardon? It's always a longer shadow at nine in the morning or four at night because it's coming at an angle. Pardon? If it's at four PM, the shadows are going to cast east. If it's nine AM, the shadows, shadows are going to cast west. At noon, it's more straight above. The, at noon, the sun is more further up. So then when the sun comes up, it sort of has a, a height above the horizon. It goes like that, that other summertime, it's same arc, but higher up and then higher up again. So so the, and we have them in the, in the packet. Um, and what you'll see is universally summer is the least shadow cast. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so again, we tried to show the best, the worst at multiple times of, uh, a day. Um, uh, so one of the things we also showed, so here's North Avenue example. Uh, so again, the North Avenue example is sixty-five feet. Right now, North Avenue zoning can go to fifty feet, uh, four stories. So, uh, the EDC's direction was to accommodate a five-story building. So this shows a five-story building or sixty-five feet. And again, that's not a building. That's the building envelope, but you can see that shadow. There's the Lake Street example. This is village hall. This is a five, six-story condominium building. I can't, I'm not sure it's five or six stories. This here is a sixty-five foot example to show where that shadow would be coming across here. And again, it goes about halfway or about three quarters away across Lake Street. So again, um, we went through just some of them. There's more than a hundred different examples, multiple sites, multiple times during the day, multiple times during the year. We wanted to show when the, the shadows for all sites were at its absolute worst or longest. Uh, and we wanted to show shadows when it was the absolute least and at multiple points between the two. So when you look at these as a package, you'll get to see the best shadows, the worst shadows, the most impactful shadows. One thing, if you go through this packet, the four o'clock number is tough in the wintertime because at four o'clock in the wintertime, uh, the shadow probably isn't clearing the trees in the forest or whatever. I mean, it's right above the horizon and it's, so everything's in shadow. So when you see the four o'clock shadow in the wintertime, everything at four o'clock, December twenty-first is, is pretty much in shadow because the sun is almost below the horizon. So the, the winter four o'clock shadow studies really aren't very helpful because everything at that point is in shadow. The other thing that we did not put in here, because we wanted to be just pure to buildings, is all the extensive tree canopy. And when you have, uh, the canopies of trees we have in many parts of the village, those cast, uh, uh, significant shadows. Now I'd rather have a shadow fall on me from a tree than on a building. No one's debating that. But so you could see the shadow line of the buildings. We didn't include any of the trees. So it's all just the buildings. So that's it. I can answer any questions about the shadow study, but we tried to be as thorough and as consistent and as broad an application as possible to show the good, the bad, the ugly. So.
I just have a question. You showed spring and fall, which basically is right in the middle on both.
Mm-hmm.
Why couldn't we see the best case scenario and the worst case scenario?
They're all in the packet. What do you mean?
Well, for like public to see. Did the public get a packet?
I, I, the, the graphics I just went through.
The shadow. Do the folks here have that?
That, that shows, so I, maybe that shows, if you go through, that shows fall, winter, spring and summer. So for every site. So we're not only showing the best, we're showing all four.
What I'm saying is, does, did the public have an opportunity to see summer and winter?
If they saw any of those, they saw all of them. So they're all in the packet.
Uh, member Plavac, I could say that, that packet was included on the village's website. That was emailed out, available on, on the village's website. We do have, uh, that exhibit available, uh, if the zoning board wants to go through it. I'll leave that to, uh.
Well, I just wondered why they didn't show it on here, both extremes, instead of just milling. That's all I was wondering.
We, we.
We have the PD. I mean.
We do have the PD.
We, I, I supplied the whole PDF, so we, we can show whatever you want. There's no, we're not trying to not show anything.
Oh, no, I just. People like.
We can. It, yeah, we can. And, and so when we prepared it, we prepared, when, when we prepared it, we prepared the best and worst case for every. When when we prepared it, we prepared the best and worst case for every site multiple times. So that was all given to the village.
So. I wanted to see it up here. I want everyone to see it up.
I've got no problem putting it up here. I didn't.
Is there a site?
Well, particularly Madison Street, winter. Nine A M., twelve P M., four P M., site one.
Yeah. Yeah, we we the village has the entire P D F. We can go whichever one you want. So.
Yes, spring or I'm sorry, uh, or uh, winter. Yep, it's coming up. And then you can show summer too, summer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and that's we.
Both extremes.
We did them all. Yeah, we did them all and we did that for a reason. So. Okay, so this up. Alright, so first we'll go over the the winter. So this is the winter at nine A M. and twelve. Like I said before, the winter for any site at four P M. Isn't a true shadow study because the sun is down below any building anywhere. You're not getting so those two bottom, those two bottom shadows don't exist at four P M. In the winter time. But the nine A M., you can see that that's this is the worst time of year. So this is the winter solstice at nine A M. And at noon, and those are the shadows. So uh, it's it's this is the worst time of year for shadows in terms of well, it's a great time of year for shadows. It's the worst time of year to be impacted by shadows. Right. And then if you want to show the summer one for the same thing. Well. So.
Twenty first is.
Right.
Four twenty five anyway.
So he exactly right. So this is then the same site for summer and you can see at no point does it even clear the alley. So at no point is it impacting at all any residential property at thirty feet or fifty feet. So again, we tried to show the worst, the best, and the two midpoints in between worst and best. So uh, we submitted this to the village, uh, the village administrator just said it's online. So anybody could look at anything. We tried to be as thorough and as transparent as possible. So.
Anything else you want to present?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, John. Um, just in the interest of time, I'll go to uh the other documents that are are new to the Z B A and to to the public. Um, at the last zoning board public hearing, uh, the the zoning board voted to request that the village get uh a second opinion on uh the work that had been done by uh, John and ultimately approved or recommended for a uh consideration by the Economic Development Commission and Village Board. The village did acquire two second, a second and third opinion. Um, those are also included in the packet. Um, one is from Jack Sed of Sightline Planning and Zoning. Uh, I just uh, he provided a letter, um, providing support for the uh, it was not asked to be a letter of support, it was asked to be a letter of review. And what he uh concluded was that the the practices that are proposed in this text amendment are appropriate for implementing River Forest land use objectives. That's the quote that's up there on the screen. And he also went through some other uh specifics as well. And then our third opinion was from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. This is the Regional Planning Agency um based in downtown Chicago that uh creates a comprehensive plan for the region as a whole and tries to provide technical assistance to municipalities and counties and other taxing bodies uh to design their own comprehensive plans to help transit planning, all sorts of other uh items. So they are uh well regarded in the planning community. There was also a letter of review uh provided by C map is their acronym for short. Um, and in that document, they had found that the uh text amendment was in uh alignment with their on to twenty fifty. That's C maps comprehensive plan. Projecting ahead and to the year twenty fifty.
The other thing, just to say for the shadow study at the a couple of meetings ago, uh, Mr. Lauber, who's a resident and a planner, suggested maybe looking at what if instead of just fifty feet all the way up, if after thirty feet up, it went in twenty feet and then went up? So if you look at your shadow packet, we did that as well. So we didn't just do the whole volume. We also did the step back volume per resident request for that analysis. That analysis is also in there four times a year, three times a day for that as well. So.
And then the uh, the last piece is just the potential impacts of the proposed text amendments. Um, there are some other documents included in the packet for this this meeting. Wanted to point out that any develop, any residential development that comes forward looking to build in town is required to pay an impact fee to our school districts based on the expected student count. That is based on uh calculation work in collaboration with the the school district to determine how many students would be expected for that type of use, how many bedrooms there would be. And again, kind of going back to my original point at the top of this presentation is that school district has an interest in seeing additional revenues as well. They are even more reliant on property taxes than than the village. And that's why seventy percent of your River Forest, of your tax bill for your home goes to either District Nine or District Two Hundred. And then in the packet included a a demographics report that was provided by District Ninety that showed a uh, a slight decline projected for the next uh seven or eight years. And also references that there have been a decline in school age children over the past two decades. Households are generally getting smaller, not unique to River to River Forest, but that is a consideration as well. Then utilities uh in the in the packet was included was a water main uh map that I know that had been referenced uh at a past zoning board study. As part of the plan development process, applicants are required to uh go through drainage review and submit impact studies on uh water and other utilities. And then traffic. As part of the plan development, each project is required to submit a traffic study that will be considered by the Development Review Board and the Village Board to impose any conditions. And I just want to make it clear that this proposal does not block off any streets. Um, I know that there have been some concepts shown in the past, but that is not, the text amendment here has nothing to do with controlling access to to village streets. And that's all I have, Chairman.
Alright, thank you. So at this point, we are going to call again on the members of the audience who want to address the board. Um, remember that uh, everything that has been spoken or given to us at all the previous meetings is part of the record. So while you're all going to have an opportunity to speak, uh, you don't need to repeat what you've told us once or twice already because it's we already have that in the record. And Mr. Uh, Reddits is going to call you up in the order that you've signed up. Anu Sofu.
Good evening. I'm uh residing in fourteen oh seven Clinton Place. And I I understand the need for economic revitalization on those business corridors. They're impacted by the C one zone, I think, uh, North Avenue. Um, I urge, however, this commission to consider graded approach instead of changing the zoning requirements. It's important to understand what impedes economic development on those North Avenue shops. Study them, understand what they need. Suggest gradual changes because once the once you implement this um rad- rather drastic zoning changes, there's no going back from them. That's all I have. Thank you. And by the way, shadow study is really um the least of my concerns, honestly, in that's region. Mainly because the shadow will fall onto North Avenue anyway, but 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 the traffic uh environmental impact. Just a few months ago, the uh, the Traffic Commission was trying to block the streets to the northeast quadrant with the barriers. And now you're trying to actually knock down the buildings and increase taller buildings there. It's just totally contradictory to me. I can't quite understand the rationale here. There's somebody sort of looking at the broader village goals and come up with some sort of a sensible solutions. Thank you so much.
Cheryl Starks.
Hi, uh, I just have a couple of comments. I live on Park Avenue across from Dominican, so I have my own issues. Uh, but I'm not directly affected, but I understand uh the concerns of the community. Now, the shadow study is fine, but then what about the privacy issue for those people who live there? And now you have that five story building overlooking their backyards. And that again, is something that changes the character of River Forest. And other thing I would like to note, um, is this meeting, are you really going to take into consideration? Everybody's concerned here? Or is this one of those things where you have us come in, say something, say, okay, we discharged their duty and do what you want to do anyway? So I hope that you were sincerely considering the concerns because everybody here, I'm sure. If you wanted to, could have moved to Chicago and pay half of the taxes if we want to live in Chicago. We do not want to replicate Oak Park, which replicates Chicago. River Forest has a distinct character and we are, I've been here almost thirty years. And change is fine. Put us a restaurants along the perimeters. If you need economic development. You don't need to put more building with more traffic in terms of uh uh occupancy. And yeah, it does make a difference with the water pressure. I know for a fact. And other than that, I just want to say the other thing about um parking restrictions and stuff that is concerned of individuals who live along that please enforce the parking restrictions because it's not being enforced. Thank you.
Ellie Koski.
Good evening. My name is Ellie Koski and I'm a resident of River Forest. Um, I have two small children who go to District Ninety and we love the schools. We love the walkability of this area. And um, I am here to just talk a little bit about um my concern for this proposal, and it's a little bit different from I think what other people are saying. I'm actually in favor of this. Um, and I think that it uh, the commercial zones are set up for the specific reason. Going up fifteen to twenty feet is not an a huge increase for what you're looking at. Your commercial zones are already dedicated for this higher intensity. And as a zoning board, I think what you're doing and what you're saying and we are putting commercial in this specific spot is the exact right thing that you need to do. So thank you for listening to this. I also think it's really um impactful that you've taken a few different points of view and you've looked at it. C map. I'm an urban planner. I've been an urban planner for twenty years. C map is one of the um most impactful um organizations in our region and it's nationally known for for their um scope of work and for their influence in not only the region but in the nation. So um, I appreciate you taking a few different points of view and having them review your information. Um, the other thing that I want to talk about is that having a good community means having a variety of choices and that not only um looks at the commercial aspects, but it also looks at housing aspects within River Forest. Um, we have incredibly beautiful single family homes. We have incredibly beautiful multifamily homes, but as we know, we have an aging population in River Forest. And what about those popul-, what about that population that um, is not necessarily looking to go to the Sheridan or an assisted living home, but they would like to downsize. They would like to go into a condo. And I think this provides an opportunity for people to have that um, that aspect and that and that option. Um, I think lastly, one thing that as a planner that we look at, especially with contentious issues, something similar to this, is that we look at design standards and um, I think that might be an appropriate point of view for some of these um corridors that um, people in River Forest are are very proud of the heritage and the single family um designs that I think have have shown um beautifully in the last hundred to two hundred years. And I think utilizing design standards within the commercial corridors I think would would maybe alleviate some of these concerns that people have. Um, being able to do something in full brick, utilizing large windows, um, potentially doing some sort of a scale that I think another person had mentioned. Um, I think all of those aspects really enhance a building and um, in many ways a a a plain building that's thirty feet may look almost fifty feet, but a an um, a a beautifully designed building um, that's fifty feet may have that impact that really only looks like it is thirty feet. So um, I I um implore the the zoning board to potentially look at that as a as maybe a compromise to some of these people who aren't interested um in moving forward with this. Thank you very much.
Reggie Liebman.
My name is Reggie Liebman and I've lived in River Forest for forty years. And um, I think what bothered me most about this is that I had no idea about any of this. I had to look it up online once I saw the no zone signs. So I I'm a little concerned about not so much transparency as communication with the board and the village. And uh, I really don't know much about it, which is why I'm here. And I know that other people have have concerns about um, how well the village really looks into um, who they're having build these buildings and um so you have to wonder if they're doing their due diligence. And now we're going to open this whole area up and wonder who's doing the due diligence to select these people to come and and build and do whatever. And my other concern that other people have mentioned to be to me is about the school system. So I I I know that like Forest Park has built a high rise on the other side of Madison. It's not that high, but and Oak Park has all those new high rises. And I wondered if anybody had done any kind of democratic demographic studies to see how many children move into these places? And is it mostly like young professionals that move in and then decide they're going to maybe live here and move out of these apartments? And to the point that the 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 woman before stated, there are a lot of people that would like to stay in River Forest. And there really is no place to downsize really in River Forest. They did try on the corner of uh Bonnie Bray over by the synagogue. They were going to do a townhouse or something and that didn't go through because I'm not exactly sure why, but that that whole little area of land is still open. Um, but I think I think what I would like to see is a little more communication with the village and with the people that live here and a little more giving me a little more confidence that everybody is doing their due diligence and we won't see the fiasco we had at Lake and Lathrop. So.
Frank Otteri.
I choose to wave my right just.
Heidi Yule.
Hi, I'm Heidi Yule and I live at twenty one Franklin, which is the third house or structure north of Madison, north of the dry cleaner. Um, I uh have lived in the house for four years and before that I owned it and rented it out. So certainly I'm very familiar with the great folks who want to rent places in River Forest. And first I'd like to say that I appreciate everybody's effort and the the definite um recognition that the concern about making people aware of this has been heard. The first time I came to a meeting related to this was about a year ago and there were maybe ten people here. So thumbs up to everybody who spent their time to. So thumbs up to everybody who spent their time to join. So appreciate that very much. I'm also the daughter of a retailer, so grew up in a family business, not here, but somewhere else. And that retail business is no longer in existence. Anybody involved in retail or attends retail stores knows it's a very tough environment. And so I don't think it is viable to expect that retail would go in, especially at that part of Madison, which I walk every, almost every day. I appreciate, again, everybody's time. Thank you for all the time that's spent. And I just wanted to call and would love to understand in continued discussion, the discussion about how this development would bring additional tax revenue, which of course we all like. I actually was able to downsize in River Forest because I went from my single-family home at Ashland and Oak to a two-flat that my husband and I acquired and are planning on living in for as long as we can live there. But as we think about the additional tax revenue coming in, which we all want and mitigate our taxes, how will it cover the additional, you know, students that might come in? Certainly, the renters that I had in my property had students that went to River Forest schools. And how will it relate to the increased infrastructure requirements that would be created by these buildings, which would be much more dense? So I am as concerned about the density of these buildings as the height. Matt, I believe you mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, in an earlier meeting that the new requirements proposed here would allow over forty units at Lake and Lathrop. Is that right? Yeah, okay. So I think about, as somebody who drives Lake and Lathrop, whose kids went to Lincoln, who lived down the street from the Catholic school, how does that increase just the traffic at that intersection and down Lake and Lathrop? And are we considering the extra tax revenue, which we all want and appreciate? But how is that in relation to the additional infrastructure costs, et cetera, that would be caused by that new? For those that drive that frequently, I can't imagine how that's just going to amp the traffic and making sure we consider that. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thomas Lamb.
Good evening, and I'd like to start off by thanking Chairman Frank Martin and all members of the zoning board. I'd also like to thank Kathy Ducci for spearheading a comprehensive plan and really having us all get together, because I think it is an important process. The proposed substantial, and those are words that were in several memos by the village administrator, modifications to the height and density along the commercial development corridor of North Avenue, Madison, and Central District, are dealing with the same issue that's been around for thirty years. Yet only now, it's urgent that this must be done now. We must raise the property height. We must increase the density. Yet we have issues about open lots that aren't even filled. Our problem, I believe, is that we have no plan for economic development. We need to have somebody on staff or a consultant that we pay a commission to go out and achieve that. We also need to talk to residents. I heard today people were talking about they've heard it for the first time. I'm one of them. I believe that the residents and the taxpayers of River Forest deserve open and transparent communication. I saw the minutes of one meeting, and I, excuse me, I'm going to get the person's name wrong, so I won't mention it, where they said, how are we going to communicate this to the residents? Oh, we'll put it up on the website. We'll do a newsletter. You're all busy. We're busy. There are so many people that aren't here tonight because they don't even know this is going on. Why, in God's name, can we not mail something, a postcard, and tell people, you want more information? Here's the link. Go out and do it. Newsletters don't cut it. How many newsletters do you get in your box each day for this issue, that issue, the other issue? We all pay our property taxes, and we love River Forest. We deserve open and transparent communication. Community economic development is the way to go. What I mean by that is economic development. I think everyone in this room is in support of things that the applicant talked about. Yes, raising additional revenues are needed, but we also need to involve the community. I can't, I've lived in a community for twenty years. I've never seen a survey that said, what type of development would you like? I bet if we did that, we would get some real unique ideas. Maybe even some people who are business owners might say, hey, maybe I'll look at River Forest. Or they know somebody that has a business that would take a second look. Once you get the community involvement, you get the buy-in, you get the trust, which builds transparency. And again, I'm not here to talk about the past. The past is the past. But there does seem to be a little bit of a lack of trust. It's not to show me, you know, it's a matter of what's going on. I also heard a comment earlier that said, well, this has been a contentious process. I've only just heard about it, but why would it be contentious if the communication was there from the beginning? You all volunteer your time. It takes tremendous burden for you and your families. But you also have a responsibility of stewardship that you take on, as does the village board. And I would like to see this process gain and regain the trust, not only of everybody in this room today, but also all the residents that are out there that don't even know what's going on. And I believe strongly that the zoning board should not act on this applicant's recommendation for the density increases or for the increases in height. We've had the same zoning for thirty years. The applicant even mentions that. Yet we have buildings that go far above that because there have been variances. The variance process is very important because it brings out a level of transparency. It brings out a level of diligence, and it brings out a level of trust. And I believe all developments end up better off because of that. In closing, I would just say that I believe that the substantial zoning changes that have been recommended are just that substantial. My last comment would be, I've seen in several places in a memo that was said that there was a new chapter developed by the consultant, John Huzzell. Why don't we see the chapter? Make it available. Let people see what it is. Yet all we hear about are text amendments. There are also references to the zoning for the commercials district in at least five other chapters. We need to see those. Why aren't we talking about that? This is what I'm talking about: transparency, clarification, community involvement, building trust. Thank you.
Robert Armalas.
Hi, my name is Robert Armalas. I live at 1501 Bonnie Bray, which is a block west of Harlem and block north or south of North Avenue. I'm not against development. I'm not against most of what's in this package. I am concerned about the height of the buildings, sixty-five foot. I kind of imagined that this morning and yesterday morning. And I don't know if that looked good on the end of my book. On Madison, I definitely would sympathize with the people who are going to get shadowed out. Part of the reason why I bought my house is I have good sunshine there. So. But the other thing that I'm concerned about is the parking. Our area is short of parking already. We have a similar parking scheme. In fact, I walked here tonight. There's a car parked in front of my driveway. There are cars ticketed every night in front of my house. Not against those cars being there. Actually feel bad for those people getting ticketed because there's no guest parking for the people who live in the townhouses or the apartments in Harlem. We always have cars parked in front of our house, service cars. So I'm going to agree with Dan Lauber about that. I think he mentioned it. I have a dear friend who's faculty member at McCormick School of Engineering at Northwestern. She's a professor of development, and the first thing she saw, parking is not sufficient. So I ask you to take a close look at that. And I would also reinforce Dan Lauber's suggestion about stepping the buildings on Madison. And thank you. Have a nice evening.
Joe Sanfalee.
Hey, everybody. Joseph Filippo, 34 Franklin Avenue. I'm a South Sider. I've been with Debbie and the crew since the demolition. So this is taking a lot of time at my kitchen table with my neighbors. And I'm going to conflict with them right now and say that I am in support of the development. I got a six- and a four-year-old. We're looking long-term in River Forest. We also live in a two-flat. My wife is an urban planner. It's kind of funny how many urban planners get attracted to River Forest. It's a great town. Excuse me. Nothing that I'm saying is against, you know, the emotions and feelings of the neighbors here. They've been through a lot with the TIF and the demolition. There's a lot of things that haven't gone well. You've heard a lot about communication, and I think Matt's talked a lot about planned development. I think that's going to be an incredibly important part going forward to make sure that we're evaluating everything that happens there. However, just kind of taking the emotion out of it. We're in favor of the changes. I think that anything that can help spur some economic development in the town is a good thing for us, for our future, for our kids. And I think the community has kind of taken on a lot of these tough issues over the last six years that we've been here. Full-day kindergarten renovations at the high school. And, you know, I respect that a lot of people have been here a long time. We're going to be here the next thirty years. So I think you heard from another urban planner as well, Mr. Lauber. Multiple professionals weighing in on this plan. My family believes it's a reasonable plan, and no disrespect meant to any of our neighbors. Thank you.
Michael Gibbs.
Mike Gibbs, 527 Monroe. I'd like to thank the board members for their service to us of the village of River Forest. Thank you. You don't have to be here. It's a volunteer job. How's Eels just hired Gunn? Don't hate him. Someone once told me the trick to public speaking is like being the dead guy at a funeral. Everybody expects you to be there. They just hope you don't say much. So I'll do my best. This board's sole responsibility, as defined in the village website, is to listen to us and make a recommendation to the village board, our elected officials. So let's help them with their job. Who's in favor? Who's opposed? There you go. Just trying to lighten the room. I served as a village trustee for eight years. It was my experience that a big crowd like this meant we were doing something wrong. During that time, I did not vote against a single variance that came before the board, including the Sheridan, which we can all agree, I hope, was a good deal. The process has worked great for many years, then and now. I feel the current process encourages participation from the residents to ensure what they want their village to be today and in the future. I firmly believe the decisions remain with the elected village board, not with the code. As a trustee, I always treated the codes as the guideline, not the law. Today's process allows the board the option to say no or yes by playing through the various steps of the process. If developers are hesitant about the process, the village needs to do a better job of selling the village. Thank you.
Kelly Abkarian.
Thank you. I live at 1226 William. My name is Kelly Abkarian, and I am a data person. I say this at every meeting because I have worked in measurement research for over twenty years. And I know the importance of data because it drives billions of dollars of advertising decisions that I have come to not only respect, but understand the integrity of the process. So I appreciate the committee's time and attention, and I apologize for my somewhat long remarks because we do need to get into some real data. Once again, I do remain concerned about the accuracy of the meeting minutes, Clifford. Despite my request for Zoom-generated transcripts for precise documentation of what everyone has said, those have not been used, and that recommendation goes unheeded. Thus, I'm submitting my remarks officially, and I will hand them out when I'm done, to ensure the inclusion in future minutes, and I would implore you to ensure all meeting minutes are accurate as we move ahead. Turning to the substance of our discussions, I find it imperative to address the glaring lack of data-supported projections within this proposed zoning plans. Anyone can change building heights, densities, number of parking spaces, number of bedroom units. I think even my twelve-year-old child could do that. The plan's promises of economic development and tax benefits ring hollow without the necessary data to back them up. How can we, as residents and you as a committee, make informed decisions when crucial data points are conspicuously absent? One particularly concerning aspect is the potential impact of the proposed high-rise buildings on both property values, tax revenues, and the overall strain on our village's infrastructure. The possibility of decreased property values for adjacent houses leads to lower tax revenues. It's a real concern that demands not only thorough analysis, but consideration. Additionally, the proposed increase in population density is likely to further stress our already burdened infrastructure, from police to fire services to schools to water and sewage systems. At our last meeting, the committee acknowledged the need for a what-if analysis. Yet once again, the packet of information that we received on Tuesday at 6:30 PM, a hundred and fifteen pages, in which many of us have busy lives and do not have the time to read, but I did take the time before I came, on behalf of all the residents here to make sure they didn't have to spend the time trying to get through a lot of data. When you look at this, you start to understand the lack of data that undermines the validity of any decision made to date based on the information at hand. Furthermore, I really must address the statements made by Mr. Walsh in his memo that he released to the residents as part of this packet, which unfortunately lacks substantiated data and overlooks crucial points from the River Forest demographic trend and enrollment projection study conducted in October of 2022 that was included in this packet. His assertions regarding school impact fees and enrollment projections appear to be based on cherry-picked data rather than a comprehensive understanding of the issues at hand. In essence, this report highlights, meaning the report done by the district, that several key factors challenge the assumptions underlying the proposed zoning changes. These changes include the influx of new families, the stagnant nature of our housing stock, and the aging population. Without accurate population estimates and a thorough understanding of Without accurate population estimates and a thorough understanding of household dynamics, the proposed plan risks to exasperate existing infrastructure strains and provide, without providing any real benefits. As stated in Mr. Walsh's memo, he said that impact fees would be a primary contributor and source of revenue of the schools and would be calculated based on the number of bedrooms per residential unit in which to determine the number of students that would attend our schools. Consequently, if a studio apartment lacks bedrooms, wouldn't the impact fee be reduced to zero for any forthcoming development, or can I just not do basic math? This prompts a very crucial inquiry, can Mr. Walsh verify this understanding for all of the attendees that this would indeed be true? The situation becomes even more concerning when considering the potential for large-scale developments with numerous units lacking bedrooms, which is clearly in these proposed changes. The proposed zoning changes removes any bedroom requirement whatsoever, leading to minimal or zero contributions towards school funding, who is seventy percent reliant, as we heard from Mr. Walsh tonight, on these taxpayer property revenues. Furthermore, Mr. Walsh asserts that developers will allocate around seventy percent of their property tax bill towards school funding. However, the basis for calculating the property tax bill remains very ambiguous. Is it derived from rental units or owned units? How is the property value actually assessed and determined? It's imperative to ascertain which type of property, whether rental or owned, generates more tax revenue for our city, as well as potentially also contributes greater population growth directly in our school systems. Clarifying these points is essential for any data-informed decisions regarding the especially school funding and population dynamics. Lastly, Mr. Walsh's assertion regarding the district's enrollment projections is also worth examining. He suggests that district-wide enrollment is anticipated to decrease slightly over the next eight years, aligning with purported declines in the number of school-aged children in River Forest between two thousand and two thousand twenty, as he mentioned the last two decades. However, upon closer scrutiny of the report included in the packet coming from the district, it becomes evident that these claims do not accurately reflect the comprehensive data presented in the demography report included in the packet. Mr. Walsh's selective interpretation of data overlooks crucial points highlighted in the report, thereby presenting a very skewed narrative that fails to capture the full scope of the findings. So allow me to help all of our residents here in the room, as well as you in the commission, to understand the key findings of the report that presents key data on the various aspects that are crucial to understand that will impact River Forest. And I'm happy to send anyone more details or even spend time of the data analysis I performed myself. As I said, that is what I do by trade. First, the influx of new families, as we've heard from a few people tonight, mostly folks coming in here that are urban planners looking for a better life in River Forest. Over the past five years, twenty-six percent of residents with young families relocated and moved into River Forest. That means an impact to our school system, while forty-four percent have relocated within the last decade, once again with younger families. This trend indicates a significant demographic shift, placing a bigger burden on our infrastructure and our schools. Second, housing trends. Limited undeveloped land, as has been mentioned here several times tonight, has led to stagnant housing stock. However, there are open parcels throughout this village that continue to go undeveloped. Sixty-nine percent of houses are single-family dwellings, however, there is a lack, as many have mentioned, for smaller affordable units. Additionally, eighty-seven percent of residences are owner-occupied today and thirteen percent are rented. Aging population, there's been a notable decline in residents aged forty-five or older, nearly sixty percent fewer seniors compared to twenty years ago. Nearly sixty percent fewer seniors live in our village compared to twenty years ago. That also impacts housing dynamics and community needs, once again, especially on our schools. Lastly, enrollment projections. This report relies on projections from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. I would agree, it's a very reliable source, indicating that the twenty fifty, on the road to twenty fifty, whatever that headline is that Matt put up earlier, that there will be an increase of twelve hundred households by twenty fifty. However, accommodating this growth would require, and I repeat, significant zoning modifications like is being proposed today to hit a twelve hundred increase of households by twenty fifty. Finally, it's important to really understand the demographer and the assumptions that go into the model and the things that were not accounted for. The demographer underscores that the report's oversight in accounting for potential changes in terms of household sizes, population densities, and zoning regulations as no data was provided. This underscores the necessity for conducting a what-if scenario assessment before implementing any rezoning or zoning changes that could impact all of these variables. The central concern persists. If zoning regulations remain unchanged today and continue to remain unchanged, district enrollment may see a slight decline. But if you really read the report, it's clear it'll remain stable around thirteen hundred students over the next eight years. In contrast to Mr. Walsh's memo, the demographer didn't anticipate a decrease enrollment. Instead, when you look at the data, stability was underscored. Furthermore, the report assumes no notable changes in population or household growth, most notably stemming from any zoning adjustments. That demographer emphasized that point multiple times throughout this report. Essentially, Mr. Walsh's memos in regard to the schools highlights the need for a thorough and unbiased analysis of all data. Avoiding selective interpretation to fit your specific narrative is not how data analysis is done. It's crucial to assess the complete data set so you, everyone can make well-informed decisions going forward. I would like to take a moment to draw parallels with neighboring communities such as Oak Park that can serve us all as a sobering reminder of the parallels of the perils of unchecked development and the importance of data-driven decision-making. Recent tax increases in Oak Park, primarily attributed to heightened school funding, mirror the strain anticipated in River Forest due to proposed zoning changes. Additionally, the decline in traditional storefront businesses exasperates the situation, with online competition leaving many storefronts vacant in River Forest, imposing tax burdens and diminishing community appeal. As we heard from someone who is a small business owner, family themselves, it is hard times and got harder post the pandemic. Despite the potential impact of high-rise developments on public services and infrastructure, River Forest has yet to learn the lesson that Oak Park made. Conduct assessments, look at data, reveal a significant planning gap or understanding of opportunity and propose zoning changes before you just go ahead and make it the law. While modernizing zoning regulations and making it easier for developers read is truly commendable, it must be accompanied by data-driven decision-making processes. Informed decisions based on robust data analysis are crucial for long-term well-being of our community amid urban development complexities. It's truly concerning to me that someone on the school board endorsed a plan that not only lacks an understanding of what these impact fees are, once again, if it's based on the number of bedrooms and we're now having no bedroom requirement, I'm pretty certain that math is zero times zero. Or accurate financial projections around the number of students that rent in a, that show up in a rental unit versus as an owned unit. Without this crucial information, they, the board, school board, can't fulfill their duty to ensure diverse revenue streams for our schools. This reinforces my opposition to rezoning changes until solid data proves tax stability or a reduction due to these modifications. I grew up a village, I grew up in a village in Pickerington, Ohio, that over time became a city just like Oak Park. And I witnessed what reckless development planning did to destroy a city, a village that was loved and the people knew each other and the community stuck together. We must avoid unnecessary strains on our infrastructure. And oh, by the way, we had about three referendums for school levies that had to pass in order to hit all the influx of people. There's been sixteen years without a referendum, get ready, everyone, it's coming. As a supporter of public schools, in fact, one of the reasons I moved from Elmwood Park to River Forest, my husband grew up in River Forest, his father was a immigrant into River Forest many, many years ago. I wanted my kids to be in a public school system because that is where I shined my best. My daughter unfortunately was already in Trinity by the time we moved, so that disruption didn't happen. But you bet your bottom dollar, my sixth grader will go all the way through the system. So I advocate for decisions to help our schools get the funding they need, grounded in data rather than hope. As they say, hope is not a strategy, thank you.
John Keith.
I passed, I just, I thought we were signing in.
Mark Weisberg. Greg Abkarian.
Hello, I'm Greg Abkarian, I live at twelve twenty-six William, um, you just heard my wife talk. Um, I grew up in River Forest, I've, since nineteen seventy-four. Um, I was born in nineteen seventy-three, I'm an immigrant into River Forest with, as my father, Kelly mentioned about my father. I was adopted in Iran, came here. I know I went to school with some of your kids, some of you I went to school with. Um, I've known all, I've known about River Forest all my life. Um, I'm not going to say things that other people have said, I'm, I'm going to briefly say, I do a lot of coaching. Um, I volunteer, I coach a lot, I'm not going to call out the families that coach, I love them to death. But a lot of those families are renting right now in uh, houses where they have four to six kids that you wouldn't, wouldn't think about it, and the only reason I know is because I've taken my daughter over to their house. Um, so when you want to build this thing and you're saying that you have a number for kids, you really don't. Don't say you do, don't say you have a system to do it, because I see families in River Forest have four to six kids in a one-flat with two bedrooms, okay, and it's a real small one-flat. And they have kids there, and it's not just one family, there's been three since I started coaching in River Forest. Um, another thing is you want to put these big, bigger buildings in with a lot of people. Um, I've been going to the traffic meetings for a little while because we had some barriers that the wonderful city put up, which they didn't follow the data, and then all of a sudden they said we should follow data and they took them down. Um, but uh, it, I'm glad that we had this discussions, but it's going to ruin the traffic, you're going to have, we'll say forty-eight, you said forty-eight units, okay. That's got, these forty-eight cars, we'll say, because, or according to you, it's one point five, so it's whatever, but it's supposed to be more, because I don't know anybody that has a place with two people with one point five cars, but, but okay. Um, so you're going to ruin traffic and, and I, somebody who had spoken up here earlier, I'm not going to mention his name. Uh, I know he didn't mention traffic, but I know he's very concerned about it, um, in his area up north. Um, so those are just the things I wanted to bring up and, and say that you're, you're missing, you're missing those things that don't come out on what my wife was saying, even data, because you can't figure it out, if you're not there, you can't figure that out. Um, and then, as somebody else said, thank you again for all your time and your volunteering, because I know this is a thankless job. I, I, I understand that, and I thank you for your time. But again, who do you work for? You work for the village, we are the village, you don't work for Kathy, you don't, you're not beholden to her, you're not beholden to anybody that works on that committee, you're beholden to all of us, okay, I don't care, and, and as I said, I grew up in this neighborhood, my parents were at fourteen thirty Lathrop, we bought the house next door, it blew up, some of you may know about that. You've been here that long, that was my house. Um, the person that lived there before was Mr. Simmons, and I know somebody on this board who probably remembers Mr. Simmons quite well. And he always said that the village, not you guys, but the board is going to do whatever they want, there's sixteen people that sit in a basement and they figure things out, and they don't care what anybody says, but at least you guys can say no. You, you're here, the majority of the city or the town does not want to do this, so listen to the town. If it was, majority said, yeah, I would shut up and say, listen to them. You, you're beholden to whatever your town wants, not whatever Matt Walsh wants, not whatever Kathy wants, you're beholden to us. And no offense to them, but they don't really have a good track record building stuff, so I'm just saying, thank you very much.
Debbie Borman.
Good evening, Debbie Borman, again, first block of Lathrop, I'm here on behalf of myself and an ever-expanding neighbor group. I want to thank you, um, zoning board, for hearing my additional public comments on the proposed text amendments. I have heard a lot of things tonight already that I was planning on saying, so I will be brief. I have four letters from residents who could not attend this hearing tonight that I would like included in the record. I will not read them, um, but they are from Dr. and Mrs. Hi Solomon, um, Giuseppeina Nissipora, Malap Sandu, and Marlene Mann, and I will present these to you when I leave the podium. I'd just like to comment on, a little bit on the opening statements. Um, I'm the resident who requested the shadow study. Um, the shadow study that was presented tonight was transmitted uh, forty-nine hours before this meeting, along with um, an additional, uh, what Kelly said was a hundred and fifteen-page document. Uh, most of us here are quite busy, this was a continuation hearing, we were not expecting a hundred and fifteen pages to have to review in that short period of time. Um, the new um, document contained um, new information and repeated specious and uninformed arguments. Um, and the continuation of the hearing I thought was supposed to be dedicated to public comment. Um, that's all I have to say about that. Um, in terms of the parking, I'm representing on behalf of my block that um, LCFS is at Ashland and was at Ashland, at, at Ashland and Lathrop. Um, building, a tall building there, the police department cannot handle the parking over there at all anyway. We are full on Ashland and Lathrop all the time. Um, there are many residents here who would make this comment, I'm wondering about how increasing density and lack of parking would affect the police patrolling our neighborhood. Our neighborhood group started as ten people in my backyard um, in two thousand twenty-one. It really started about eight years ago with people who were dealing with the TIF that was um, imposed on our neighborhood, I've only been here three years, so I was not part of that original group, but I resurrected it. We have now quadrupled in size and we include neighbors from across the village, from Harlem to Thatcher and Madison to North Avenue. Most of the people here tonight are informed because of my very, very small group of volunteers who put a flyer at every single person's home that they could access in this neighborhood, that is how people became informed. And as you've already heard, the village does not do that kind of informing, and people had no idea until they either saw our signs, and I believe there's about two hundred and fifty signs up across the village with, and were able to see our QR code so that they could look up the details of the petition. So thanks to my group, um, we have a group of people here tonight that seem to be about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy, and then fifty people on Zoom. Um, none of that would have been possible without the work of my neighbors. Um, John, how silly you finally have your robust participation. I don't have to go all into all of the examples of the lack of transparency and the falsities um, in um, the four different emails that were sent out that some residents viewed. We uh, transpose those into the um, palm card that most of you have in front of you, if anyone um, on the board here would like a card, please let me know. Uh, we wanted to drill it down to the main um, facts versus fiction, the fiction is what the village puts out. If you're interested, though, I can give you a copy of my annotated FAQs, which show all of the things that the village says online that are completely false. Sorry, I'm just looking through stuff that people have really already covered, which is really phenomenal. One thing I really want to emphasize is that the village took our sign, rezoning, interpreted it as reclassification, we never argued that any property was being reclassified by this text amendment. However, an argument can be made now that the commercial zones are literally being reclassified as residential districts as we're talking about bedrooms in the commercial district. Normally, the commercial district by code is only residential by planned development, so why are we going into all these details about bedrooms and uh, residential units? Finally, in the um, FAQs put out by the village, and I quote, your input is valuable. Finally, in the FAQs put out by the village, and I quote, "Your input is valuable and a continual part of this process that is integral to each step." Well, so far that has not been true. We have been, my neighbors, most of my, my small group, to about seven or eight meetings, and this is the third hearing where we presented our views. And yet, here we are with no changes to the proposed text amendments. Sure, there have been some additional support of them presented by the village's representatives, but you know, nothing has been changed at all. Like, oh yeah, we probably shouldn't reduce the parking. No, no, that hasn't happened at all. Finally, to show the impact of our communication and my group, our, our petition online as of this minute has 917 signatures against this zoning. That number is higher than most of the votes for any position in River Forest for trustee or library board. So, you know, we can't wait till the next election. Thank you very much for your time and I will bring you these letters now.
Renee Duba.
Thank you. My name is Renee Duba and I live at 24 Franklin in the neighborhood of where all the action is. I'm going to keep this really short because it's late and positive. I am actually excited about the prospect of development, especially in that stretch of Madison Street. I'm excited about it, but you, you've heard that the community is lacking trust and confidence that decisions, smart decisions, thoughtful decisions will be made with regard to what, what goes there. The village says it's been decades since the zoning ordinance has undergone a comprehensive assessment and rewrite. This doesn't feel like that. This feels kind of ad hoc, right? And in conflict with the knowledge that we need to look at the whole thing in a comprehensive way. I thanks, thanks to Mr. Housil for the shadow study. It's tax time, so I had like, I was looking at it on my phone, because I didn't have any time to look at it. But it does confirm that a 50-foot building looks pretty terrible, ugh, in my view. So that's just me. I mean, there's a, there is a time of the year where my house is in shadow all but noon. And I'm not even in the TIF district. So, so anyway, we talked about how do we attract a developer. The environment is very difficult for that right now. It's in flux. But I will tell you the one thing that scares away a developer more than anything, this, right? So I got some ideas. I'm not a real estate developer. So this may come off as a little naive, but take it in the spirit of, I want to help. You got to slow this process down and you got to do the work. Okay, there's more work to be done. Do that comprehensive assessment and rewrite like you say we need. We have the time. I worry we have years before there's a developer who's interested in a, in a ground-up development. There's too many opportunities in standing buildings that are already there right now, and that's going to go on for years. So we have time. Create a structured process for the assessment, invite stakeholders, residents, various commissions, including sustainability, traffic safety, planning, all together in the conversations and the visioning. Identify all parcels in our village that present a redevelopment opportunity. Now, we talked about some blank spaces, but frankly, there's a handful of vacant, blighted, single-family homes that present an opportunity. Now, they're privately owned, yeah, but let's make a plan of action to capitalize on it, because those properties are creating damage to the value of our investment already. Don't wait on a developer to do the impact studies. Let's do them. And let's include that information in the visiting, visioning process. Let the impact studies inform the optimal level of density, not the other way around. Add provisions, like if you're going to do this text amendment, could you at least add provisions that protect the community? The step-down height requirements showed a, sort of a positive impact, at least on the shadow study. But shadows is just one thing among many concerns that we have. Write that down. Put, put that in the code. Don't rug pull a developer who thinks they can come in here and build all the way up, right? Don't do that. Green space requirements are all new developments, reasonable and congruous setback requirements. You can thank me later, John, but I'm going to say this again. Can we please use Mr. Housil's fancy 3D virtual reality technology to help bring home the vision and earn community support? I think it's expensive for him to do it, but I think it's what you're going to need to get buy-in from the group here. And once we're all comfortable with the possibilities, let's proactively find the right developer, proactively. Don't wait for someone to appear. I urge you to work harder on this. Spend the time and the money to create a holistic envision that the community will embrace. The developer will thank you. Thanks.
Beth Chang.
I'm Beth Chang from 30 Franklin. You've seen me before. It's very late, so I will also try to be brief and not repetitive. I just want to say, kind of listening to everyone, I feel the guiding principle for this discussion moving forward should be finding a way to balance the academic development goals and village impacts resident concerns in a thoughtful way. And I just have four points I want to make. First, thank you very much to the village and the commission for requesting the additional information and analysis. We did receive a lot in the packet. And I would say it's a good start. As Renee just said, it answers some questions, but not all of them, and it raises more questions. I'll just give two brief examples. One is, you know, the consultants, while they said that this kind of keeps in keeping with economic kind of zoning standards around, it appears they specifically were not given resident input to consider, which I believe the zoning board asked for. And what I was hoping to see was some creativity around, how do you do this? How do you balance economic development and these very typical concerns that might arise? Another new question that arose for me in reading the analysis is this, this idea that density is needed for quality development. So now I just have this question that I would like someone to answer me, is what does quality development mean? The second main point I want to make is, well, it's really just this thing about wanting to see, as you move forward with this process, creative approaches, and I won't repeat some of the things that Renee just said, but you know, look at specific things you could do, step backs, setbacks, what is really the right density level. The third point is, we keep getting told to just, don't worry, we'll deal with all these concerns in the planned development process. And I think that because there is sort of a history of this lack of trust, some people don't feel comfortable, right? With this idea that, let's just wait, there will be a traffic study. What I want to hear is that there are going to be traffic solutions proposed, not just, there's going to be a study. And I, I would reiterate that for something like that, I think you could do a cursory analysis now, just like the shadow study. You, you calculate how many cars and just do a projection and come up with some potential solutions, because we all know there will be more traffic. And then the last point is one that I did make before, but I'm going to bring it up again because it wasn't addressed. And that is, if you proceed with these kinds of blanket zoning amendments, what kind of protections will there be to say that there are not going to be just more variance requests? If the idea is that the community somehow decided this is what we want, then we need that to be on the public record in the statements from the board and the commission. And ideally, that would be reflected in a companion amendment in the variance part of the code that says, you know, there's some very strict standard for any variances to these, these new changes. And the final thing about that, though, is that ironically, doing that in some ways makes it less flexible than the current case-by-case approach where there are buildings that are probably outside of the zoning amendments that have been proposed. So again, thank you very much for all of your time and your continued efforts to do this in a thoughtful way. And let's just find a way to balance this, because I think everybody in the group does want to see economic development, but we just also want to see the village and resident concerns considered.
I'm not going to do so good on this name. Andrea Morzynski.
Hey, y'all. Andrea Morzynski. I live in 1430 Harlem. I'm just going to repeat some of the quotes that were made by the opening statements, almost verbatim. The village needs to see economic development. There are possible developers, more variety of possible developments, large variety of options in our commercial quarters. Also, from your handout that you had today, I outlined and underlined a line, the commercial zoning codes, attract quality developers, proposed development. My question really is, where? Is the village talking to somebody right now? Where are the empty spots that you are proposing and talking to these developers about developing wherever you want to go? Is this going to Lake and Lathrop? Awesome. Let's build that place up. Is it going to replace any housing on North, on Harlem? On Lake Street, on Madison? And I say that because this is a sentiment that has been repeated since I've arrived here in River Forest. I've been living here for over 10 years, that there's always something, that there's a threat, displacement, removal of homes. I appreciate Kathy Aducci for saying residential remain residential, public recreational and institution areas will remain the same. I hope that the village keeps their word, because if they don't, and if there's something, and if there's some replacement or displacement happening, especially in Harlem, I'd like you guys specifically to tell the 20 kids that live specifically on the 1400 block of Harlem where they will live next. Thank you.
Margie Sikander.
I want to thank the board for holding it in this venue and allowing lots of space. I appreciate it. I wasn't planning to speak, but the last two or three weeks, I think there are things that need to be heard. First, the shadow study. We waited three months for a shadow study, ending with a 115-page packet that was released Tuesday evening, shortly after the original short agenda was emailed to residents at 6:27 PM Tuesday. The packet is too much to reflect and comment fully in a short time, but that is the intent of our village leadership. Full consideration should be continued to the next ZBA. Initial thoughts in the limited time is the data is concerning. Sunrise on June 19th, still spring, is 5:16 AM and sunset is 8:30 PM, while sunset December 21st is 4:24 PM. The study doesn't adjust times for seasonal angle of the sun. These times show bias as the sun is higher in the sky at 9 AM and 4 PM than it is those other times. And summer studies aren't particularly helpful. You've, you've, in the diagram, you've located the parking adjacent to houses on village-owned former home sites with in and out and noise and light issues. Why didn't the EDC or the village board order the study in 2022 before meeting with the Madison residents in 2023? Was the North Avenue resident meeting that had one attendee adequately advertised? Regarding the process, on January 10th, January 10th, the EDC voted to recommend the ZBA consider, quote, "The House seal recommendations, but also shares concerns regarding the height restrictions for C3 and OREC districts", end quote, meaning the 65-foot heights in C3 and OREC districts. Note, quote, "The House seal recommendations", end quote, not the EDC's, not the plan commissions, not the villages. Matt Walsh's January 11th explanation of the EDC concerns to the ZBA at Commissioner Davis's questioning did not fully explain the EDC concerns. Did the ZBA ever receive full clarification of exactly the EDC's concerns? I encourage you and everyone to listen to the January 10th EDC meeting regarding those concerns, the vote, the motion and the vote. But why did the EDC vote? December 20th, the notice of public hearing to replace the standards for all four commercial districts preceded the EDC vote. Why did the EDC chair direct its secretary to suppress how each commissioner voted? This is a convoluted process and again, lack of transparency. What notices of changes were given to residents and neighbors of C3 and OREC? How about the residents and neighbors of the six properties in C2 on Ashland and Lathrop at Hawthorne? Those notices should be in the January 11th public hearing packet or in the most recent hearing packet. Regarding rezoning, several properties were rezoned from R2 to C2, shown January 23rd with a revision February 24th. Zoning maps, they were not identified as being rezoned by Matt Walsh before the board on, before the village board on March 11th. Three parcels on the 400 block of Thatcher were rezoned and number six Keystone was rezoned from R2 to C2. Is that how we rezone? The new map appeared after the second public hearing. What notice was given to those owners and neighbors of the rezoning? Regarding the real rationale for development, development in TIF districts like Madison Street and North Avenue tie up increases in property taxes for up to 23 years. Monies are paid to developers or at the end of the tenure to be paid out to taxing bodies like the schools, which would be in 2035 or 2040. Development at Madison North Avenue will not help with near-term tax shortfalls. TIFs actually force property taxes higher than needed to replace the tax increases held in TIFs and later released outside of taxpayer referenda. There are, there are, long-term, there are some examples of successes like Town Center 1 and 2. The village is in deficit spending again, only offset next year by reserves. Pensions take 46% of the village portion of property taxes. Water is marked up three times what we pay Chicago for water. In March, the village board approved a $1.7 million new equipment purchase and continues to pay $917,000 a year for the North Side Sewer Project and costly alley improvements were pushed earlier. Matt Walsh stated the Sheridan brings in over $800,000 a year in total taxes. How much tax revenue would Lake and Lathrop Development add if completed June 2021 as initially approved? $2 million a year? $3 million a year? Over two years? That's $4 or $6 million. Three days ago at the village board meeting, development was linked to offsetting a possible $1 million shortfall of grocery sales tax revenue. If that's true, and if village leaders have vision, the village board wouldn't have approved in February a $1.7 million fire truck and previously advanced the alley reconstruction. It's a scare tactic. The village board is desperate to use development to distract from its Lake and Lathrop failure. There is a campaign of coercion by the village board underway. Page two of Matt Walsh's April 11th letter in the packet regarding schools, parks, library, township is a roadmap of the taxing bodies being pressured. An example of who's being pressured is D90 board member Christine Mackay in a letter to friends supporting the changes. By the way, D90 took 41% of your total tax bill last year. Her letter was forwarded from President Aducci to EDC, the ZBA, and the village board, lest the boards forget who is village president. Where the, where were the taxing bodies when Lake and Lathrop was extended repeatedly into ultimate failure at the expense of their tax revenue? To commissioners, you all, and to residents, don't be manipulated by the village board's campaign. To commissioners, you all and to residents, don't be manipulated by the village board's campaign. In the Wednesday Journal viewpoints, village president states, quote, "There is nothing to fear here," end quote. It's another Adusi move to pressure commissioners and residents now to approve changes. But live, live with the consequences later. Does this sound familiar? Adusi reminds us in the Wednesday Journal letter of the village board's power to approve or deny any development, but it is regardless of what citizens desire. Adusi is putting you all forward to pass for changes so you commissioners deflect citizen anger and the village board can simply go along with the Z B A. Don't get sucked in. Zoning changes are not needed for sixty-five foot, foot height developments such as Lake and Lathrop's project that was approved via our D R B process. The zoning changes aren't required to get quality development with our D R B, D R B and Z B A processes intact. Just better marketing. I ask you to reject the village board's changes and not be manipulated by the village board. There are other opportunities like smaller properties such as four hundred block of Thatcher, Lathrop and Central. What about maximizing tax revenue from empty storefronts and undertaxed parcels? If the vision was future revenue needs, why wasn't the prior area developed? Thank you.
That's the last individual who signed up to speak from the public tonight. What's your name?
I'm not really, I'm not, I'm not really, I, I won't, I won't do this to everybody, but I do think it's important. Um, I had, I was asked to read something that I wrote. I'm not going to do that, um, because it's my opinion and nobody needs to hear it. But I will address the woman that spoke that live on, lived on fourteen hundred block of Harlem. Uh, eight years ago, ironically, um, uh, April fifteenth, I brought a letter to my husband in the morning and it was a, a letter from the village of River Forest and it said, uh, you have been placed in a TIF district, um, you, uh, how was it? I wish I had the letter. Anyway, you're, I'm placed in a TIF district and the village will help us relocate to Berwyn or Forest Park. I had three kids, um, one that was out of school, two that were still in the school district. I was like, what the heck? We're not moving and we're not moving to Forest Park or Berwyn. What does this mean? Later that day, my older son, my oldest son passed away. So the TIF district became the least of my concerns and my life has been whatever. But I'll tell you what, the village has done nothing, not one thing, to help calm us down. And my thing I wrote was about how much we want development. I moved, I could have moved anywhere in the village at the time we bought our home. We chose Madison Avenue. We chose the, the bars and the, the buildings because that's what we wanted. We didn't choose to live among a high rise of, of, um, no bedrooms or whatever, whatever. It's like, please stop telling us what we don't want or what we're against and stuff. It's like, how about instead of worrying about all these developers and how we can be attracted to them, why doesn't a creative developer come in and be like, this would fit into our village? And this is what we will use to bring revenue and to help keep the character and the neighborhood, what we all moved here for. I'm so tired of defending my position and who I am and what I am by all these different spins. And so I guess my, why I'm saying that is I would be still afraid of somebody taking your house because that's exactly how this thing started for me, was somebody said, you can move to Berwyn or Forest Park. No, thank you. I chose River Forest. So that's all I have to say. I mean, I have a ton more to say, but I, I'm sorry for the time and thank you all. And I hope you make your decision based on, based on knowledge and, and not on what you're supposed to do. I mean, I mean, not what you're supposed to do, but you know what I mean. No, you don't know what I mean. Anyway, sorry. Thanks.
Matt Nichols.
Hi, good evening. I'm Matt Nichols from seven hundred block of Park Avenue. Um, I'll try to keep this concise. Thank you so much for your time tonight and everybody else as well. I am a current homeowner raising three children who are going to be fifth generation River Forest grown and raised. I'm also a ten year local business owner and a professional engineer. The commercial zoning district as it's currently acting is not a commercial zoning district. It's not functioning. The combination of zoning criteria creates undeveloped lots. From parking to F A R to the number of units per square foot, it leaves no room to match the land with the need. It would be interesting to hear what a common commercial lot could actually develop under the current zoning. Uh, I'm guessing it'd be something like a sea of pavement for cars. Then you'll run out of room, so you'll build a little bit of a building. Uh, the current mix of vacant land, aging buildings does not provide the amenities my family seeks in the community. We value a walkable, bikeable community with small local businesses. Zoning serves as a mechanism not to stifle citizen participation, but to provide clear guidelines for everyone inside and outside the village. We can use these guidelines to hold elected officials accountable and by establishing realistic zoning regulations, we reduce the likelihood of behind the scene, behind the scenes agreements, TIF districts and other things that favor large scale developers with significant financial or political influences. The consequences of such unchecked processes were evident in the recent Lathrop failure. There will still be P D meetings on majority of these developments where we will voice our project concerns on a case by case site, uh, basis. And with that consideration, I fully support a handful of these zoning changes. Changing dwelling units per square foot of land from twenty-eight hundred to one thousand square feet, the current regulation is exceptionally high. And although this change represents a significant shift, it remains more stringent than standards observed in many nearby communities. This is particularly relevant in the selected areas. I'm gonna skip a little bit for everybody. Changing parking from two cars to one point cars per unit. I don't want my core commercial districts to be sea of parking lots or garages. I want it an area where kids and families can walk to shops. This suburban style sprawl is not fiscally sustainable for the village or the businesses, nor are the parking garages, uh, residentially scaled. Take for example, the three story building across from Lincoln Elementary. This building boasts many River Forest business stalwarts. You can go travel planning, get your cleaning done, buy chocolates for your loved ones. This building also contains numerous condo units on the second and third stories with only a small parking lot in the back. If we were trying to build this again today, uh, as you showed next door, it'd have to be a seventy stall parking garage. Um, at which point we'll have minimal funds left over and we'll end up with mediocre building structures. I'd rather spend the money making more peeling buildings, attracting homeowners and businesses that have the same pride that River Forest and everyone else has. The elimination of the far requirements are redundant with the other, uh, measures. The building height, it seems reasonable to limit structures to four or five stories, especially considering their integration with nearby residential homes. This is particularly true with expanding offsets proposed in these amendments. North Avenue would have less light impacts. We went over all that. Um, but in general, thank you so much for these efforts. I am happy that we can have proper guidelines. Proper guidelines bring in the proper people who are excited to do work in our community. I look forward to mine, my kids' future and a sustained, healthy and well balanced village. Thank you, guys. Good evening.
Sandra Brain. Sandra Brain.
All right. Are there, are there any more sign up sheets being hidden out in the audience someplace? All right, if there, if there are none, then we'll ask the applicant to make a final statement.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for, for your comments. I want to be brief to allow the zoning board to, to be able to deliberate and hopefully make a recommendation tonight. Because the first point I want to make is that the economic development strategy and looking for creative developments is not mutually exclusive to the text amendment that's before the zoning board tonight. The village currently is seeking a, a broker to help with the marketing of village owned sites. And any of the proposals, some of the shorter restaurants, the other things that would be excellent to have in town would still be welcome. This is increasing the maximum. If something comes in well below and it's appealing to, to the development review board or the, the village board, it, it certainly would, uh, have a great likelihood of success uh, at approval and then eventual construction. I know there are concerns about the, the what-if scenario, uh, and the projections of, of what this change might happen and unchecked, uh, was, was used. I completely understand those concerns, but I want to point to the planned development process and the fact that our code has a low threshold for projects to be approved. The twelve hundred units, that is not realistic. I know that, um, a lot of the development challenges, the reason that there only have been several, a handful of projects built over the past few decades is not only because of the zoning, it's also because of the, the challenges with smaller lots, uh, expensive lots and construction costs. Uh, I know there was a point made about the ideal commercial lots. A lot of the shallow frontage on our commercial corridors lend itself primarily, primarily to a use similar to the strip center that John described at the corner of Franklin and Madison Street. And on, in terms of those projections, um, yeah, a studio would not be projected to have a, a very small amount of students. I can't say for certain that would be point zero zero zero, but it would be point zero zero one. And the proper, the impact fee will pale in comparison to the property taxes that would be paid by that property every single year. Uh, there was a question about the impact of some of the new buildings in Forest Park across Madison Street. That building, uh, everything over by the blue line, it's been built within the last fifteen years. And Forest Park has closed a school and it was very close to closing a second. Similar to what happened in River Forest over thirty years ago.
Come on now, Matt. We have one of the highest education systems in the state of Illinois, and they don't. That's why.
Understood. As a proud graduate of Forest Park Middle School and with a, with a former teacher of mine in the audience, I, uh, I think that we can all value public schools no matter where they are. And the point of this is to fund those schools properly. One of the other comments towards the end of the night were pointing out the incredible costs of fire trucks, of alley improvements, of pensions. But that is why the village and the other taxing bodies collect property taxes, to invest it in the services that everyone moved to River Forest for, to fund, to make sure our police department is fully staffed by having, uh, pensions that are funded, a fire truck that would respond to the fire that happened on the three hundred block of Park last week. And then the alley improvements that are meant to alleviate flooding and the successful project up on the north side of town. That's why the village collects money, not to keep it in saving, but to invest it back into the community. That's all I have.
Well, that statement from Mr. Walsh will close the public portion of the hearing. What that means is now on, we as a zoning board of appeals will consider uh, these proposed text amendments. Uh, there will be no additional comments from the audience or the applicant unless we ask question. You have to understand that what our job is, is to make a recommendation to the village board. When, and I don't know if we'll make that recommendation in five minutes or tonight or at a, in, in a continued hearing right now. Uh, but at some point, our recommendation will be taken up by the village board. Uh, and you will be given an opportunity to address the village board according to whatever rules they have for public testimony. They may not be as liberal as ours are, but you will have an opportunity to address the board. Uh, I think we need to remember that whatever we decide, there's no bad guys here. The, the audience, the, the, the people who are here tonight who've expressed opinions, thank you for doing so. Uh, we thank those that, that were well thought out and, uh, addressed to us. And John House seal and Matt Walsh are not bad guys. Uh, they're here because the village believes that the action that's been proposed is necessary in order to continue the, the development of the village. And we all have to remember that what we're really talking about is money. Uh, it's money out of our pockets. If we get some new developments, ideally that would, uh, result in additional funds to the village and the schools. You know, I'm not sure if, if we should count on our taxes ever being reduced, but they may not go up as fast with the new, with new developments. You know, it's always interesting to hear people when they address us to tell us how long they've lived in the village. Uh, we don't really keep track of that. We don't measure it. You know, the good guys have a hundred years and the bad guys have a hundred and fifty. You know, we don't, we don't do that. Uh, and one reason we don't do that is because there are people on this board that I think beat everybody here in the, in the audience. And just to reiterate one other thing that's, that was said tonight, you know, this is not uh, the reason, a rezoning hearing. This is an amendment, a proposed amendment to the existing zoning code. Uh, it may be more dramatic to put a sign in your yard that says you're stopping rezoning, but that's not what's going on here. Uh, whatever we decide, there is still a planned development process that the village requires any, any development of greater than twenty thousand feet to go through. Uh, that development process may be, become easier for a developer if we decide the village board, not us, but the village board decides they're going to raise the height or get rid of the F A R requirements. But there's still eight or ten standards that in the code that the development review board and the village has to determine that each development has satisfied. So regardless of what decision that the village board finally makes, any properties that, that we are talking about this evening are, are going to go through the planned development process. And there'll be hearings conducted, uh, for those application. So, uh, I guess it's time for us to decide, uh, what, what do you want to do tonight? Generally, we, we, uh, we recess these meetings at ten o'clock. So let's hear some discussion as to whether, are you ready to, are you ready to vote? Are you looking for more information? Uh, do you want, or what, who, who wants to begin a discussion on these proposed amendments to the zoning code?
I mean, speaking for myself, I think I'm ready to go. I think we have a lot of information. We digest it a lot. We've heard from a lot of people. I think we can probably vote tonight unless, you know, we all want to extend it another month. I think we've got what we need. Um, of course, if anyone wants to discuss further, I definitely support that as well.
I, I agree. If anyone wants to discuss as a board, I'm, I welcome that discussion, but I have pretty much made up my mind on this and unless some new information appears in the next month, I don't think we need to delay this another month.
I concur with that.
Well, the consensus is that we move forward and vote tonight on the. Well, the consensus is that we move forward and vote tonight on the proposed amendments to the zoning. If someone needs to make a motion for us.
You discuss or vote.
Make a motion, we'll second it, then we'll discuss it, then discussion's over, we'll vote.
I'll make a motion to discuss. I'll make a motion to vote or discuss. To approve the amendments, the zoning amendments.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. We approved the zoning amendment as they have been tendered to us by the, yeah. Anybody have any discussion, any comments on it?
I have comments. Should I make my vote? I don't want to sway now.
I understand the need for development and I support development that meets the needs of our community. But I cannot support the proposed text amendments because I feel that they are too sweeping, impacting Madison, Lake and North Ave. I also feel that the amendments grant too many concessions to developers and have not incorporated resident feedback. If the Village Board moves forward with voting on these amendments, I strongly suggest that they include step-back height requirements and maintain the current, the current parking requirements. But I cannot support these changes at the ZBA level because they are very extensive and do not include any compromise to address resident concerns.
I would agree with her comments. I, I think the whole idea of the step-back makes a lot of sense and I have concerns about the parking requirements as well.
I agree as well. I, one thing that I heard tonight was the, the word that it was pretty strict or... I didn't write it down, but it was the, a very big bite and it's a lot of change. And what we're hearing from our fellow neighbors, I think, take that in consideration. My concern is that there's, there's not, there, there hasn't been room for a combine or a middle ground or what would work, you know, whatever others suggest. I, I don't, I know that I can't move forward with a recommendation.
All right, any other comments?
I think the other side, that I trust the process and I trust the people behind the process. I think they've done their due diligence. I think we have to move forward for economic development.
Anybody else?
I would appreciate also somewhere down the line.
All right, any other comments from the members? All right, you want to call the roll and the motion is to approve, to recommend approval of the proposed zoning amendments to the Village Board.
Chairman Martin.
No.
Ms. Davis.
No.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mr. Lucchese.
Yes.
Ms. Schumaker.
No.
Ms. Price. Mr. Plavac.
No.
All right, so the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals to the Village Board will be that by vote of one to six, that these amendments not be approved and become part of our zoning. All right, so the last thing on the agenda is to remind everyone that our next meeting is May 9th. We have a motion to dismiss.
Yeah, remember for standing.
And second.
Motion to dismiss.
My favor, say aye.
Aye.